Yeah, I like that. Okay. I'm gonna tell my daughter that. They serve them some young attorneys for together or something.
Hey, we'll call our February 19th, 2015 meeting of the Cookeville City Council to work. We have a roll call, please.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Womack, four present, one absent.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation, given a knock by Pastor Steve Taboo from the River Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Let us pray. Father, thanks for being so awesome. Thanks for the beautiful snow you gave us this week. I gotta say, it sure makes the place look pretty. And we thank you, Lord, that you're an artist and you let us see that. Thank you, Lord, for your love for the city. Lord, I do believe that you have given us the best city in the world to live in. I thank you for these men that have, and women that have committed their time to serve you today. And pray your blessings on their family, Lord. I know they give a lot of time as volunteers. Lord, bless their families this week. Let them have some fun time in the snow. Let them have some great conversation with friends. Lord, just give them blessings this week for their time that they give to others. Lord, I pray you bless our city. I thank you, Lord, that you have blessed it. I mean, man, we live in a great place. But, Lord, I thank you for the jobs you've sent our way. We pray that you continue to bless us. And God, I pray that you bring a spiritual awakening here in Cookeville, Tennessee. Lord, I pray that if no other place in the world, Lord, that we get to see your love shine, I pray that you just bust it out here in Cookeville, and that this will be a place where folks could come and understand your love and your compassion and your mercy and your generosity and your forgiveness. Lord, help us to be your hands and feet in this community, loving each other with the kind of love that Jesus you taught while you're here, and help us to be kind to one another. And, Lord, just forgive us. Forgive us for the places that we fall short, when we get selfish and bitter and unforgiving. Lord, just forgive us for that, and just clean us up and make us new in Christ. We pray that in his name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Steve. Item 5A, consider, I'm sorry, consider approval of agenda as presented, item 3.
We do have one addition to the agenda, and it'll be item 7E, consider approval of the memorandum of understanding with Oxon LLC. Sponsor is Ms. Belinda Kiefer.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, item 5A, consider approval of amendments of council being held on February 5th, 2015. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item 5B, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-150202 to amend the Cookeville Municipal Code Title 12, Chapter 8, Section 12-801, the Energy Conservation Code. Mr. Littrell.
Mayor and City Council, this is the second reading on adopting the 2009 Energy Code. We've not had any calls or comments since the first reading.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Anyone like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item 5C, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading ordinance O-150204, amending the budgets of the General Fund, Drug Fund, and Economic Development Fund of the City of Cookeville for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015. Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, as you mentioned, this will amend the budgets for various funds of the City of Cookeville. There have been no changes to this budget amendment since first reading, and I would recommend approval.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak at the public hearing about these matters? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion on the amendment, on the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, under the item 6 consent agenda, 6A, consider awarding bids for semi-annual paving and mineral aggregate, Public Works, and 6B, consider awarding bids for transformers, fiberglass poles and uniforms from the Electric Department. All these are low bidder meeting specs. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item 7, new business. 7A, consider authorizing the city manager enter into an engineering contract for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project. Mr. Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm here seeking authorization for the city manager to enter into a engineering contract with Consolidated Technologies Incorporated. They're gonna provide consulting engineering services necessary to do some improvements at our wastewater treatment plant. This is a copy of a picture of the plant. We haven't done a project in the plant in a pretty good while. We focused on collection system and water plant. But this is going to, we've got cracks in some of the walls. They're not structurally, but they need to be corrected. There's expansion joints that need to be repaired. We do have a need to replace the disinfection system, which is a UV. It's the first generation of that UV system. We're gonna replace it. It's no longer, we can't find parts. It's reached the end of its useful life. We're gonna do some spray, effluent spray on some, on the screw pumps there during thermal expansion during the summers. They expand a little bit and they rub a little bit before it does any more damage. It'll do that. We're gonna replace some doors and windows in the lab operations facility. Some of that was recommended in the Tennessee Valley Energy Audit that we had sort of done internally the last couple of years. We're also gonna do some upgrades on the SCADA system and probably add a couple of cameras for security down there, and replace a bunch of valves and so forth. It's a not-to-exceed contract in amount of $1,000, $1,500, and I would recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion among the council?
I have just one question. You've got one, you've got one company do all these different, these different projects? Is that?
One company?
I mean, you see?
Well, this will be designed and then bid out?
Oh, okay, okay.
This is just the design portion?
Okay, the design phase, okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item 7B, consider authorizing the city manager enter into an engineering contract for the lagoon cleaning at the water treatment plant. Mr. Kelly.
Mayor and council, seek, also seeking authorization for the city manager to enter into a contract with Consolidated Technologies Incorporated. They were the company that designed the lagoons originally and the last expansion at the water treatment plant. We have at that location up in, as you clean water, backwash filters and so forth, that water's gotta go through settling ponds and then goes back to the lake or through a membrane system. Those fill up over time, and so we need to get those cleaned out. We're gonna have, the company we're requesting, they will put together a bid package for us, help us determine, we're gonna try to clean two of them out and do it with the belt press, and then do a little bit of cost analysis on whether we should try to line one of them with some concrete. The cost is not to exceed $20,800, and would recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion among the council?
How often do you drain the lagoon?
Ah, the last time, we probably did it about three years. They need to be really probably, depending on what kind of silt you're getting out of the lake, probably about a three-year cycle at the most. And these will went a little bit longer than that.
Ronnie, what kind of problems does that put on demand? If you, if you, if you do, I mean, is it, does it have a problem with, does it put a problem on demand if you, if you take out one lagoon versus?
No. No, it doesn't affect the pumping, pumping treating water to plant, to the town, no.
It doesn't bog, I guess what I'm questioning to ask is, doesn't bog our, it doesn't bog our water that we could get to the customers?
We'll just isolate one.
Like if we had a serious drought or something?
No, we'll do it here in the next four or five months. It won't have an effect.
Any other comments?
Ronnie, is there a part, I think I asked you this during the work session, but I still, I'm not quite clear. The engineering work we have done, because of the professionalism, we don't have to, we don't have to bid all of that, do we?
It's professional service, Dan can speak to that. Professional services are negotiated. You can't bid it by state law.
Certain professional services, you can choose.
Architects, if you.
Architects, engineers, attorneys, things like that. You can choose who you, who you want to do business with, and you don't even have to do an RFP if you don't want to. You can just select who you want to use.
And then we try to negotiate a reasonable cost.
But when you put something out for construction or to purchase something, then you have to follow the bill law.
Right, right. Do you, do we have opportunity on frequent occasions to use local architects and local engineers?
We have used local architects. We've used some local engineers in the past, and we do, I think there's a local engineer now doing the Bennett Road 12-inch waterline extension. He's doing that. Some of the projects, we don't think there's probably the expertise here, but if there is expertise, we'll try to work that in.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7C, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an engineering contract for the TTU sewer shed evaluation. Mr. Kelly.
Okay. This is another one. Seeking authorization for the city manager entering the contract. This is Gresham Smith and Partners. We've been doing some work with them. They're doing the equalization basin side assessment at the wastewater treatment plant now. They've done our sewer shed models. We've done quite a bit of work in the sewer collection system with them. We are going to now get ready to look at the Tennessee Tech. And what you're seeing in yellow is everything that drains into sanitary sewer into that basin, and there's a pump station there. We're gonna have them do some, through a subcontractor through them, and then do a whole evaluation of that whole basin. TV, every bit of line, set up flow monitors, pump station evaluation, force main evaluation. We've got some issues there, and we've gotta try to figure out what's going on, and so we need to get this done. All of these are budgeted, and we budget them in our budget this year. Trying to think what I had on here. We've negotiated a not-to-exceed price of $228,125. We'd recommend that. A lot of that is TV work and physical work in the ground.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, item 7D, the final item in the Ronnie Kelly Poop Show. Consider approval of change order number one on the 2014 Water and Sewer Line Replacement Project. Mr. Kelly.
Mayor and council, we're seeking a change order number one with the John T. Hall Construction. Back in November, the council awarded a contract to him in the amount of $194,847. We thought we had permission from T.DOT to go across up in the right-of-way of a culvert down around 12th and Old Gainesboro Grade. After we bid the project, after we had the project bid, it came, T.DOT came back and said, "No, you don't have permission. We're afraid of future widening of the road. We want you to get out." Right-of-way.
Sorry.
So we have, while our engineer in our office, our local engineer, or our internal engineer, was then investigating it about how to get across and getting some permits, he discovered we've got a water line here that's been eroded also, and there's a sewer lateral there that's gotten eroded over time. So we've talked to the contractor. He's gotta come through here anyway with the force main and reroute it. We've requested prices and negotiated with him a price to, let's concrete cap all of this, fix sewer lateral, move the force main, and we've negotiated a price of $15,000 to do all of that. We think it's a fair price to both parties, and we recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on this item?
Ronnie, a couple of questions. The, the situation with T.DOT where we thought we had permission but didn't, was that just a communication problem with them, or how did that?
It was a communication, verbal communication from our engineer with their engineer, thought it was good, bid the project. When they got the permit, came in the mail, they had made notes on there and said, "No, you can't do this." So we learned a lesson about wait till the permit's in hand before we bid.
Does this change order, if I read this correctly, does it mean that the, your cost's actually $15,000 more than the, than the $194 we allocated for?
Yes, yeah. Basically, you're adding $15,000 to the cost of the contract. And if we'd have knew, if we'd have known this earlier, we'd have put it in the contract to go ahead and do it while we were there, but we didn't know it.
So they would have been pretty close to this to?
Yeah, that's what we think. Yeah, we think it's a fair price for both parties.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item 7E, consider approval of MOU with Oxon LLC. Belinda Kiefer.
Thank you. Mayor and council, tonight we have for you a memorandum of understanding brought to us by Oxon LLC, which is a local development group. In this MOU, basically, it's recognizing that the City of Cookeville desires to identify parcels that are in native development. We have done that some in our 2030 plan already. We do have a plan to sit down in the next few weeks and to maybe look at that in a little greater detail. The MOU also recognizes that the City of Cookeville believes that tax increment financing could possibly provide incentives to spur development in these needed areas. And we've had several meetings, several presentations on tax increment financing, and we'll be having more in the future. The MOU also states that such time that Oxon has established the project on identified parcels, then they would provide the city with a master development agreement as well as an economic impact plan as required by state code for the Uniformity Act for Tax Increment Financing. Basically, the MOU is establishing a good faith effort and cooperation between the City of Cookeville and Oxon. It basically says to them, as they're moving forward with their plans, "We support your efforts. We recognize the areas that need development, and we want to be considered a partner in possible proceedings going forward." I will tell you, the MOU is a non-binding agreement. Again, it's kind of a letter of support. It's a opportunity for us to show again in good faith that we're pro-development, pro-business, and support local development efforts.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just also want to point out that the MOU says that the city is going to establish criteria for the designation and development of these TIF areas. And so those criteria are still being worked out and worked on by Ms. Kiefer and her staff, and that'll be an important component, not only for this TIF, but any other TIF you may want to consider in the future.
So we will have parameters and guidelines by which we, the projects are considered in the future.
That is our intent. TIF is a new tool for us. It's been used in a million different ways across every state and every city. I think where we really are is, what does it mean to us as a municipality, to our tax economy, to our citizens, to smart development, return on investment, benefit, cost analysis, et cetera? So we'll just have to do a lot of due diligence, and a lot of that will be different per project. So we have called some experts in to help us do this. Again, it's not something we need to take lightly or kind of venture out on our own. So those are plans we have in the works, and hopefully within the next, I would say, maybe 30, 45 days, we'll at least have some guidelines.
Very good.
Any other comments? Any comments from the audience? No? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 8, citizens' request for hearing before the city council. Does anyone want to speak to the council's nod on any matter? All right, we'll go with number 9, 9A. Receive the city financials, 7114 through 123114. Mr. Davidson.
Mayor and council members, you have in your packets copies of these slides. Unfortunately, for those that might be at home watching, I don't have, I don't have these slides in PowerPoint for them tonight, but you have copies of them, and I'm gonna be brief in my comments. I'm gonna run through these fairly quickly, and stop me at any time if you have any questions about any of the different funds. But again, this is for July 1, 2014, through December 31, 2014, so six months through the year. Essentially, every fund is looking really, really good. Everything's in line with budget. I will point out one concern with our employee health insurance fund when we get to that one. But right now, the general fund, starting with the general fund, we have received so far through first six months of the year, $11,826,000 in revenue with, that's 49.23% of what we had budgeted for the year. And property taxes, primarily, we received the majority of those in February, so we're at 41% of our property tax revenue right now. Local option sales tax, we're really, so far this year, collections for sales tax have been really, really good, and hopefully that trend will continue. We've 51.34% of our local option sales tax budget so far, we've received that. But again, hopefully that trend will continue. But again, 49.23% of our total revenue has been received through the first six months of the year. On the expenditure side, we have expended in operating, on the operating budget, $12,017,000, which is 51% of our budget. A little bit over, but the driving force for that is the first six months of the year. We have 26 payrolls throughout the year. We've got 14 in the first six months, so we'll have 12 in the last six months of the year, just the way the payroll cycle worked out. So that's the driving force behind that, the payroll and benefits. Capital expenditures, we've expended 45% of our capital budget, $346,000. We will finish that up in the next couple of months. Most of those items for capital have been bid and approved by council already, and we're just waiting on the delivery of certain things. So total expenditures for the, for the first six months, $12,363. We have made our transfers to our animal control fund as well, as well as our treeboard fund and to the economic development fund. So when you take all that into consideration, operating, capital, and the transfers to the different funds, we've expended $12,861 for the first six months of the year, which is 51% of our budget. Skipping, or moving on to the State Street Aid Fund, we've received 53% of our projected revenue, which is $423,695 through the first six months of the year. And total expenditures for the fund is $773,996. Big part of that's related to our paving. Some of that's coming back in the form of STP or grant funds that we'll get back from the state of Tennessee as well. But again, everything is right in line with budget for the State Street Aid Fund. The next fund is Solid Waste Fund. Total revenue's right at 54% for the first six months of the year, so a little ahead of budget. So total revenue, $785,680, and we've expended capital, operating expenditure in total, $778. So again, everything right in line with what we expected in our sanitation fund. Our drug fund, we've received $151,000 in revenue, which is way above budget. Part of that's a budget amendment that you, that you approved earlier tonight. Additional revenue has been awarded to the drug fund by the court system, so we've received that money by December 31, and we've recognized that with the previous budget amendment that you all approved just earlier tonight. So total revenue, $151,000 to date, or through December 31, and then $69,501 in expenditures for the drug fund. Our animal control fund, through December 31, we have total revenue of $126,588, which is really almost 81% of the projected revenue for that fund. The city has made our, our transfer to the animal control fund to help operations there. That was $74,000, which is considered revenue for the animal control fund. And expenditures to date are $94,000, or expenditures through December 31, $94,999, which is right at 42% of their budget, so expenditures are quite a bit lower than projected. Again, the new animal shelter just opened in mid-January, and so we still have a few months to go to really see the impact, operating-wise, operating expenditures, of what that new shelter will be. And so by the end of March, hopefully we'll have an idea of what it is taking to operate that shelter down there, or a better idea. The economic development fund, primarily funded by property tax revenue, and again, in February was when we'll receive the majority of the property tax revenue. But through December 31, we have $131,686 in revenue. That's roughly 34% of that budget. And in expenditures to date, we have $966,779. The majority of that expenditures is coming out of the fund balance there, monies that have been sitting there for the, to finish up our business park. And then we had some expenses there related to economic development for Project, or Academy, Academy. So everything is in line again with the economic development fund budget for the year. Everything's looking good there. Quality of Life Fund, again, is supported by property tax revenue. One cent on our property tax goes into the Quality of Life Fund. We have received $32,522 in revenue so far for the year, and we have $8,557 in expenses for the year. Our debt service fund, I'm just gonna keep moving on. Debt service fund, where we pay all the bond, principal, and interest on any existing city debt that we have, general obligation debt. We have total revenue, $1,750,000. That's 53% of our projected revenue. So again, everything's in line there, and we have expenditures to date of $371,000. Majority of the principal that we pay on our, on our debt, majority of it's paid on May 1st, so that's why you see on one line, $49,100 total principal on bonds. We'll pay that on March, or May 1st. So again, everything's in line there. Interest rates on our variable rate debt are still below 1%, so everything's, right now is very, very good in the general obligation debt service fund. Moving on to water quality control, again, everything's in line with budget. They have total revenue of $7,274, which is right at 52% of their projected revenue. Total expenditures in the fund, $7,476. That includes capital to date. That's 42% of their budget. But again, no surprises in the water quality department. Everything, again, is in line with, with projections. The same is true for the electric department. They've got $27,109,000 in revenue, right at 49% of their projected revenue, and they have $27,708,000 in expenditures, which is right at 49% of their projected expenditures. Again, no, no surprises in the electric department. Gas department, total revenue through the first six months of the year, $3,988. That's only 33% of their budget. But they're not, they don't, their revenue comes in this time of the year right now with the weather we got right now. So by the end of, by the end of April, their, their revenue will be recognized, the majority of it by the end of, end of April, which will include the March, March winter month. And I'm not expecting any, I don't have any concerns at this point with the gas. And I'm not expecting any, I don't have any concerns at this point with the gas department in terms of their revenue. But currently through the December 31, they have $3,988 in revenue with expenditures of $6,987 and that's right at 50% of their budget. And that's a lot of, the gas, they purchased a lot of gas upfront, put it into storage and that's all recognized in these, these statements here. So again, no, no concerns right now with the gas department either. The employee insurance fund, that's the one fund that I do have concerns with and it's primarily driven by claims. Premiums, city's self-insured, claims pay, or premiums are paid by the employees as well as the city on behalf of the employees. Goes into the employee insurance fund where we reimburse physicians and medical providers for all the claims. Premiums to date, $2187, which is 50% of what we budgeted, so everything's in line with revenue. It's just the claims dollars, as you can see, we've got $2,471,000 in claims. Claims specifically are right at 60% of what we had projected for the year. We've had a few people that have had some serious illnesses. So again, that's the one, one fund that I'm concerned about, especially the claims. And we're working with Blue Cross Blue Shield just to look at different options for the health plan should this trend continue. So we may have some, hopefully some recommendations going forward to look at and to consider with the insurance fund. And the last fund I have for you is the general improvement bond fund. That's where we account for a majority of our larger projects. Back in December of 2013, we borrowed $4.3 million. The projects that are being constructed with those, with that debt issue are being accounted for in the general improvement bond fund, this fund. The majority of the funds there are in the fund balance and we had to start the year $2,880,000 in fund balance and we've spent of that $1,295,000. So we still have some work to be done on Dogwood Park, what we call Phase Three, or I call Phase, Phase Three. And we're still, we finished up the animal shelter for the most part, which was funded in, in the, that bond issue. But, but through the first six months of the year, we spent $1,295,000 of that $2 million fund balance. So that's all I have for you and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council about the report?
Mike, just a couple of questions. I'll go back to page one, the general fund. In lieu of $779,557, I know, I know a lot of that comes from the hospital. What are the other sources of the, in lieu of, where does the rest of that come from?
This line item, this line item, the in lieu, the, the in lieu payment from the hospital you're referencing, we actually put that in our debt service fund. So it's not in this line item.
Okay.
But these would be the utilities, electric, gas, water.
Okay.
That's primarily those. We do have some in lieu payments from Russell Stovers as well as the housing authority, but the majority of the in lieu of tax payments is the utilities, electric, gas, water.
What is, do you know approximately what the in lieu of payment from the hospital is at this point?
It's $700,000 per year.
I think it's in there somewhere at $350,000. There's, there's one item I saw earlier.
Yeah, it, that number's in the debt service fund.
Okay.
If I can find it myself. And the budget's 700 and through the first six months, we've received 350 of that salary.
Animal control fund, Mike, just the total revenue, $126,588. Where, where does that come from? How do we, how do we pay that money?
We have Putnam County contribute $75,000 this year toward the operations of the animal shelter. So of that 126, 75,000's from Putnam County. We get support from Monterey as well as Allgood and Baxter. And then the other is roughly, through December, there's $27,363 that are adoption fees, various other fees, it, collection fee, not collection, I can't think of it, intake fees. I was trying to think of the term. It's intake fees. Then we have donations and, and to the shelter of $16,000. But the majority of it is the contributions from Putnam County, the city of Cookeville and Monterey, Allgood, Baxter contribute as well.
On the animal control fund, did we, did we do a analysis when, when that was approved of what the expenditures would be on the operations of that new facility?
We made a.
Guessment?
Best guess of that based on operations at the current facility, which is, has lots of issues at the current facility. So it was our best guess at it based on what was happening at the current facility.
Do we think we'll be within parameters of what we have in here for that?
We think so.
Okay.
Right now, I don't have any concerns at this point. There's not been any surprises yet. But again, through the end of March should give us a better idea. That'd give us basically three months' worth of operations down there.
Okay.
One of our, one of our biggest concerns, Mr. Mayor, was how much extra staff we need. And we're getting so many volunteers that if that keeps up, then I don't think we're going to need a lot of additional staff.
Good.
One of the things I noticed when we got on the front page, the general fund, one of the surprises is the license and permits. That's 40% above what you projected, isn't it?
That is and the building permits, that, that's.
That's a good sign.
That is. And it's, big, big part of that was Academy.
Mike, I want to ask you also on the, you mentioned that the potential problems with the insurance fund. Is it premature or is it too soon to tell what Blue Cross Blue Shield might be saying as, as far as recommendations as to bring those two numbers close together or change an insurance plan? Is that, those discussions have not started, but have any idea about where that might go?
Not, honestly, I don't. We, we've talked, we're, we're looking at the plan, the plan design. Is there any changes within the, the way the plan is set up and the benefits that are offered in that plan? Is there anything there that could help with those claims cost? And that's what they're looking at right now. The, the basic plan itself is a standard Blue Cross plan. There's nothing, you know, really in the, in the benefits that are offered that are not pretty standard across the board. It's just, you know, we've got aging workforce and a lot of it is just the aging workforce. So with that comes additional claims. And, you know, we saw that a few years ago where claims were pretty flat. They spiked a couple of years and they kind of flattened back off. That happened two years ago again, they spiked again. Last year, they actually decreased just a little bit from the year before and then this year, I'm looking at potentially probably around $400,000 more than what we had projected in claims.
I'm afraid as we age, it takes more than an apple a day to keep the doctor away.
All right, any other comments on this financial from Mr. Davidson?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things before we end up. I'd like to say, and I know probably the rest of the council would too, what a great job that our city departments and crews have done this week for the, the massive storm that we had, the, the snowstorm and the ice storm. And, you know, not just, obviously you think about the police and the fire out in it and doing their thing, but, you know, the electric department and the linemen that had to work, you know, some of them 24, 36, 40 hours straight to keep power on for our citizens and to make sure people were safe and the, and the street crews and the public works and, and all the things they did to keep our, their streets as passable as possible. And it's, it's very gratifying. I receive literally dozens of messages in appreciation of what's going on. So appreciate it, you know, I know it's, some people say, well, you know, that's what they get paid for, but you know, you, you can't expect things like what has happened and what may even happen tomorrow and tomorrow night. And then once again, we're going to be in those issues. But I talked to Tony several times with the electric department during, during that and I mean, they were just right on top of stuff, trying to get stuff back on. I was in Knoxville today and Knoxville, Knoxville, Knox, Roan and Blount County, there's still over 30,000 people without power. So we, I think we're down to less than 100 and that's all because of mainly where things were torn off the, the houses, which is not something that we can even do. But, you know, clearing streets and doing all those kinds of things. Gas department, I know probably the same way, checking stuff. So we're, we're very appreciative as the city council.
We hope, we hope we're down to zero as we speak.
Great. Great. Rest of the council?
For 24 more hours anyway, right?
24 more hours, yeah, just.
This weekend.
Absolutely. All right, we'll stand adjourned.